I call to order the August meeting of the Board and Board of Education. We'll start with the first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Nicholas Amstutz here. Mr. Alfred Davis here. Mr. Mark Foltz here. Mr. John Landers. Mrs. Kimberly Palmer.
Time is reserved at this point in the agenda for citizens to address the board according to policy BDDH. I don't believe we have any. The next item on our agenda is executive session to discuss employment of personnel. There are a motion.
So move. Second. Brad. 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 Mark. Rich. Mr. Amstutz. Hi. Mr. Davis. Hi. Mr. Foltz. Hi. Mr. Landers. Hi. Mrs. Palmer.
Who do you want? You just yourselves or? Pick the board and Frank.
Jared, you didn't get any information on whether high school is a focus priority area, that kind of school, did you? Did you get any information when thinking about high school being focused priority area?
How are you doing?
It's the new thing instead of school. New language.
We're back into regular session. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda and consent agenda. Any questions? Rich.
I have a change Capitol Conference coming up. We have to get our reservations in. We have to nominate a delegate and an alternate for Assembly there. So I believe it's part of your packet, but I also printed it out here for you. I'm asking that we have a motion as part of the board members' business to hold the board to see who's going and who the delegates will be, as it appears on the sheet that you have there.
Do you need a motion to add that to the agenda?
No, just.
Okay.
Do you want to represent us? It's up to you.
We have to approve the amended agenda.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda with the updated board members' business?
So move.
Second.
Okay.
And there's two other motions, Rich, to extend a one-year contract for the 2014-2015 school year for Superintendent Frank Lazzare. And also the same motion to extend a one-year contract for the 2014-2015 school year for Ward Director of Instruction, Dr. Linda Ross.
We have to leave the, I think, Mr. Amstutz and Mrs. Palmer with the first and the second on the amended agenda. Can that state?
Next motion is the second.
No, Kim, second and then Kim. That allowed us to talk about it now that you.
Whether to amend the agenda or not, those particular issues.
We don't need another motion for the board members' business. No, that's for the amended agenda.
Mr. Davis. Hi. Mr. Foltz. Hi. Mr. Landers. Hi. Mrs. Palmer. Mr. Amstutz. Hi.
The amended agenda and consent agenda is approved. I do not believe we have any unfinished business. The first item on the board members' business is a motion to set the date of the September Board of Education meeting to accommodate the Civic Association candidates, and we proposed moving the September meeting to Monday, September 30th at 7:30 p.m. here. So is there a motion to move the meeting? Is there a second?
Second.
Rich.
Mr. Landers. Hi. Mrs. Palmer. Hi. Mr. Amstutz. Hi. Mr. Davis. Hi. Mr. Foltz. Hi.
The next item in the board members' business is to discuss Capitol Conference. It's recommended that the board group of following members attend the Capitol Conference can be held in Columbus, Ohio on November 10th through 13th in 2013. And I had folks planned that they were planning to attend. Yeah, I know I was planning to.
I believe so. I would go based upon results from the election.
I will.
I will go regardless of the actual results of the election.
I'm in. So I'll go.
Is there a motion to approve the full board's attendance at Capitol Conference?
So move.
Second. Rich.
Mr. Davis. Hi. Mr. Foltz. Hi. Mr. Landers. Hi. Mrs. Palmer. Mr. Amstutz. Hi.
The next item is it is recommended that the board appoint a delegate and an alternate to attend the Capitol Conference business meeting to be held on November 11th, 2013. We tend to appoint a delegate and an alternate. I will not be hardworking if I don't consider this issue, but I'm glad to. I'm glad to.
I'll do it, it doesn't matter.
I'm glad to pass on it.
All right. I'll nominate you then.
Okay. You have to nominate or? Okay. I nominate Nick Amstutz to be your delegate for the business meeting on November 11th, 2013. Is there a motion to appoint both?
You just need one motion.
Is there a motion to appoint Nick Amstutz as the delegate and Mark Foltz as the alternate for the Capitol Conference business meeting on November 11th, 2013?
So move.
Second. Rich.
Mr. Davis. Hi. Mr. Foltz. Hi. Mr. Landers. Hi. Mrs. Palmer. Mr. Amstutz. Hi.
Delegates Capitol Conference. The next is recommended that the board extend a one-year contract for the 2014-2015 school year for Superintendent Frank Lazzare. Motion.
So move.
Second. Don't believe there's any questions. Rich.
Mr. Davis. Hi. Mr. Foltz. Hi. Mr. Landers. Hi. Mrs. Palmer. Mr. Amstutz. Hi.
The contract extension is approved. The next item in the board members' business is recommended that the board extend a one-year contract for the 2014-2015 school year to the Director of Instruction, Dr. Linda Ross. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second. Rich.
Mr. Landers. Hi. Mrs. Palmer. Mr. Amstutz. Hi. Mr. Davis. Hi. Mr. Foltz. Hi.
The next item in the board members' business is to discuss Capitol Conference. It's recommended that the board group of following members attend the Capitol Conference can be held in Columbus, Ohio on November 10th through 13th in 2013. And I had folks plan that they were planning to attend. Yeah, I knew I was planning to.
I believe so. I would go based upon the results of the election.
I will.
I will go regardless of the actual results of the election.
I'm in. So I'll go.
Is there a motion to approve the full board's attendance at Capitol Conference?
So move.
Second. Rich.
Mr. Davis. Hi. Mr. Foltz. Hi. Mr. Landers. Hi. Mrs. Palmer. Mr. Amstutz. Hi.
The next item is it is recommended that the board appoint a delegate and an alternate to attend the Capitol Conference business meeting to be held on November 11th, 2013. We tend to appoint a delegate and an alternate. I will not be hardworking if I don't consider this issue, but I'm glad to. I'm glad to.
I'll do it, it doesn't matter.
I'm glad to pass on it.
All right. I'll nominate you then.
Okay. You have to nominate or? Okay. I nominate Nick Amstutz to be your delegate for the business meeting on November 11th, 2013.
So move. I nominate Mark Foltz.
And then a motion to appoint both?
You just need one motion.
Is there a motion to appoint Nick Amstutz as the delegate and Mark Foltz as the alternate for the Capitol Conference business meeting on November 11th, 2013?
So move.
Second. Rich.
Mr. Davis. Hi. Mr. Foltz. Hi. Mr. Landers. Hi. Mrs. Palmer. Mr. Amstutz. Hi. Yeah.
Is there a motion to appoint both?
You just need one motion.
Is there a motion to appoint Nick Amstutz as the delegate and Mark Foltz as the alternate for the Capitol Conference business meeting on November 11th, 2013?
So move.
Second. Rich.
Mr. Davis. Hi. Mr. Foltz. Hi. Mr. Landers. Hi. Mrs. Palmer. Mr. Amstutz. Hi.
Delegates Capitol Conference. The next is recommended that the board extend a one-year contract for the 2014-2015 school year for Superintendent Frank Lazzare. Motion.
So move.
Second. Don't believe there's any questions. Rich.
Mr. Davis. Hi. Mr. Foltz. Hi. Mr. Landers. Hi. Mrs. Palmer. Mr. Amstutz. Hi.
The contract extension is approved. The next item in the board members' business is recommended that the board extend a one-year contract for the 2014-2015 school year to the Director of Instruction, Dr. Linda Ross. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second. Is there any questions? Rich.
Mr. Foltz. Hi. Mr. Landers. Hi. Mrs. Palmer. Mr. Amstutz. Hi. Mr. Davis. Hi.
The contract extension is approved. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a second mark? Are there any questions about the consent agenda? Rich.
Mrs. Palmer. Hi. Mr. Amstutz. Hi. Mr. Davis. Hi. Mr. Foltz. Hi. Mr. Landers. Hi. Yes, I'd like to introduce to the board a new hire. Who's that? Jennifer Cabuno. Jennifer is a graduate of Yountstown State University. She has been a Title I tutor at West Polhar and will be taking Pam H.'s place. Pam Rostocksky, I believe, is the best pronouncer in China. This Buddha has been a loyal employee and she's done an outstanding job at West Polhar and positioned well in her teaching for three. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We usually put you through the thought that if you could come up, then we'd like to shake your hands. Come on. And then we let you leave, right? Welcome, congratulations.
Thank you.
Wait so long. Thank you, Jennifer. Congratulations.
Sure.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
The next item on the agenda is the treasures business. Is there a consent?
There's one donation recommended. Board accept the following donation to Market Street Elementary School, $500 from Mr. David Hinkle for technology needs. The donation is from a David Hinkle YU scholarship fundraiser. It's for your approval.
So move. Second. Rich.
Mr. Amstutz. Hi. Mr. Davis. Hi. Mr. Foltz. Hi. Mr. Landers. Hi. Mrs. Palmer.
The donations are appreciated.
Last item is the 2013-2014 tuition rates. Recommend the board approve the tuition rate as established by the State Department of Education for the 2013-2014 school year. The tuition rate established through Ohio Revice Code 3317.08 is $40.78 per day for 178 days of attendance.
We made that 175, Rich, because?
I'm sorry, I understand.
Because of the waiver dates. 175 student attendance base. Sorry.
Mark, is there a second? Second. I don't believe there's any questions. Rich.
Mr. Davis. Hi. Mr. Foltz. Hi. Mr. Landers. Hi. Mrs. Palmer. Mr. Amstutz. Hi.
I believe that tuition rates actually increased since last year. I think last year we were 38, 35, 36. How did that change?
I don't know. It was less aid, less taxes, less students. You know, I didn't see the calculation.
The tuition rate for 2013-2014 has been improved now into superintendent's business?
First item under superintendent's business is an agreement for audiological services with Yountstown City Schools, as is found in attachment six. I ask for your approval.
So move. Second. Any? Rich.
Mr. Foltz. Hi. Mr. Landers. Hi. Mrs. Palmer. Mr. Amstutz. Hi.
Item B is for counseling services with the firm of Mastriana and Mittel. This is for St. Charles and is being paid out of government funds auxiliary services. The agreement can be found in attachment seven, and I know this is at least the 10th year that we've been using Mastriana and Mittel, ever since I've been superintendent. And I think prior to that, I ask for your approval.
So move.
Any questions? Rich.
Mr. Landers. Hi. Mrs. Palmer. Mr. Amstutz. Hi.
Item C, interpreting services. Recommended the board enter into an agreement found in attachment eight for interpretive services with Rhonda Buie, effective August 1st, 2013. I ask for your approval.
So move. Second. Any questions? Rich.
Mrs. Palmer. Hi. Mr. Amstutz. Hi. Mr. Davis. Hi. Mr. Foltz. Hi. Mr. Landers. Hi. Mrs. Palmer. Mr. Amstutz. Hi.
Item D, Ohio Teacher Evaluation System credential evaluators can be found in attachment number nine. This year, we aren't mandated, but we're going to do some teacher evaluations based upon volunteers. In order to evaluate, the board must approve the evaluators who have passed their credential tests through NIET, the credentialing agency. So I ask that you approve the list of administrators as found in attachment number nine.
So move.
Second.
There's only one principal about you.
Yeah, I have. I'm not taking my test yet.
Okay.
I will be on there. Are you, are you passed?
No. I gotta take mine. I'm with Mr. Kurt Olafson. He's gonna have to re-sign mine. Mr. Eby, so we know.
The state does not mandate that you implement or that we implement OTEs, but we do have to implement OPES this year. And there are people who haven't taken the course yet, which I don't think is offered till, I believe you're taking it in October.
Okay. So we're not going to make this.
Correct. There will be nothing to this.
Okay. Any other questions? Rich.
Mr. Amstutz. Hi. Mr. Davis. Hi. Mr. Foltz. Hi. Mr. Landers. Hi. Mrs. Palmer. Mr. Amstutz. Hi. Mr. Davis. Hi.
Item D, Ohio Teacher Evaluation System credential evaluators can be found in attachment number nine. This year, we aren't mandated, but we're going to do some teacher evaluations based upon volunteers. In order to evaluate, the board must approve the evaluators who have passed their credential tests through NIET, the credentialing agency. So I ask that you approve the list of administrators as found in attachment number nine.
So move.
Second.
Any other questions? Rich.
Mrs. Palmer. Hi. Mr. Amstutz. Hi. Mr. Davis. Hi. Mr. Foltz. Hi. Mr. Landers. Hi. Mrs. Palmer. Mr. Amstutz. Hi. Mr. Davis. Hi. Mr. Landers. Hi.
Item D, Ohio Teacher Evaluation System credential evaluators can be found in attachment number nine. This year, we aren't mandated, but we're going to do some teacher evaluations based upon volunteers. In order to evaluate, the board must approve the evaluators who have passed their credential tests through NIET, the credentialing agency. So I ask that you approve the list of administrators as found in attachment number nine.
So move.
Second.
There's only one principal about you.
Yeah, I have. I'm not taking my test yet.
Okay.
I will be on there. Are you, are you passed?
No. I gotta take mine. I'm with Mr. Kurt Olafson. He's gonna have to re-sign mine. Mr. Eby, so we know.
The state does not mandate that you implement or that we implement OTEs, but we do have to implement OPES this year. And there are people who haven't taken the course yet, which I don't think is offered till, I believe you're taking it in October.
Okay. So we're not going to make this.
Correct. There will be nothing to this.
Okay. Any other questions? Rich.
Mr. Amstutz. Hi. Mr. Davis. Hi. Mr. Foltz. Hi. Mr. Landers. Hi. Mrs. Palmer. Mr. Amstutz. Hi. Mr. Davis. Hi. Mr. Foltz. Hi.
School bus routes per ORC. Recommend the board approve the school bus routes for student pickup and drop off locations for the 13th-14th school year as prepared by the Transportation Office. I ask for your approval of that.
So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions?
Has there been much change?
Yeah, there are tweaks every year because?
Nothing substantial.
Nothing substantial. Rich.
Mr. Davis. Hi. Mr. Foltz. Hi. Mr. Landers. Hi. Mrs. Palmer. Mr. Amstutz. Hi.
Parental contracts. This also deals with transportation. Recommend the board grant superintendent permission to appoint parental contracts as needed for the 13th-14th school year. These parental contracts are used when transportation of students is declared impractical. Ask for your approval. And every year, it's probably no more than five to 10 such contracts.
So move. Second. Any questions? Rich.
Mr. Foltz. Hi. Mr. Landers. Hi. Mrs. Palmer. Mr. Amstutz. Hi.
Waiver days. I know you're getting tired, Seamus, but the state did not approve our last application for waiver days because the May date overlapped with the testing schedule. So they said make sure it's outside the testing schedule. So I believe they will approve this, but it must be board approved. So I ask for your approval of the change of the waiver days and change of the school calendar, as can be found in attachment 11. And once again, the only thing that's changed is that May waiver date. I ask for your approval.
So move.
Will we have any issues getting approval on the September days prior to us?
No. In fact, the consultant from the State Department called. She was very nice of her to call. That May date was within the makeup window. And even though we normally, foreman, would have all of their tests done before then, they couldn't approve it because it was within their guidelines. And so she said, after you approve it, they'll do an automatic approval on it if I'm not going to compromise. Thank you.
Any other questions? Rich.
Mr. Landers. Hi. Mrs. Palmer. Mr. Amstutz. Hi.
Informational item, don't forget. Monday, we have our opening meeting at the BPAT that begins with addressed by Mr. Landers. He's promised to keep it to an hour and a half. If you can get there at 7:50, we're going to try to get people herded in there. It always takes a while. But we will introduce the Board of Education, and usually the board president makes his remarks. So we'll see you Monday. And also, September the 4th, in case we don't see you before then, we, that first day of class, we generally go around to all the buildings. And that first day, if you recall, bussing's always a little bit delayed, and the kids getting off the bus, and the bus drivers learning the routes, and taking the time to, you know, get the pictures with the parents tearfully seeing their child go. We're going to start a little bit later at 8:30 instead of 8:15. So if you wish to go around with me to all the buildings, 8:30 on Wednesday, not Tuesday the 3rd, but Wednesday the 4th. And also, Dr. Ross, you probably want to extend your, you know, invitation to the board.
I was just going to say that.
On Tuesday the 3rd, if you want to participate, if you want to be part of the waiver day and learn about some of the initiatives that will be implemented. It's actually starting on the 26th, but we will continue on September 3rd. You want to speak to that?
Sure. I was just going to say, these will impact all of our teachers.
So we'll see you Monday. And also, September the 4th, in case we don't see you before then, we, that first day of class, we generally go around to all the buildings. And that first day, if you recall, busing's always a little bit delayed and the kids getting off the bus and the bus drivers learning the routes and taking the time to, you know, get the pictures with the parents tearfully seeing their child go, we're going to start a little bit later at 8:30 instead of 8:15. So if you wish to go around with me to all the buildings, 8:30 on Wednesday, not Tuesday the 3rd, but Wednesday the 4th. And also, Dr. Ross, you probably want to extend your, you know, invitation to the Board.
I was just going to say that.
On Tuesday the 3rd, if you want to participate, if you want to be part of the waiver day and learn about some of the initiatives that will be implemented. It's actually starting on the 26th, but we will continue on September 3rd. You want to speak to that?
Sure, I was just going to say, these will impact all of our teachers. So on the 26th, Barbara Williams Robey is going to be one of our speakers at Opening Day talking about the rubric of the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System, OTES as we know it. And we'll continue that conversation in small, on building level groups after her large presentation. The building principals are going to be showing some video clips of classroom instruction and our teachers will be scripting as to what they will be looking for as principals will be coming in to observe them. So they'll have a hands-on opportunity to really get comfortable with that rubric. Following that up, on the first waiver day, September 3rd, we're going to really focus on student growth measures, which is, I call it the right-hand side of the evaluation tool. The rubric, classroom performance, being the left-hand side. So we're going to open with Dr. Tobacco from this state-supported team Region 5 and two of her colleagues who are going to speak on formative instructional practices, identifying learning targets, which are the foundation for developing student learning outcomes. Then in the afternoon, we have Mark Robinson, who's our Northeast Ohio representative from the Ohio Department of Education, speaking on student growth measures, in particular how to develop student learning outcomes, and two of his colleagues. We have teachers divided by grade level cluster, so the K-4 teachers will be meeting at Market Street Cafeteria, starting at 8 o'clock in the morning with coffee, 8:30 presentation starts. The morning presentation is 8:30 to 11:30. They'll be at 11:30 to 12:30 break for lunch. And the afternoon presentation will be 12:30 to 3:30. That same schedule will be followed here at the Foreman Center Middle School Auditorium for our 5 through 8 teachers. And again, the identical schedule at Foreman High School Cafeteria for the high school staff. So all the three presenters will be presenting the same content. It's only because we wanted to keep, even though our groups are large, a little more manageable than 300 people in one room at one time. So I think it will be better having them have tables to write on and also meeting with their grade level colleagues. But please, you're welcome to attend all of those or any part of those that fit into your schedule. And we welcome your input as we continue implementing not only the OTES initiative, but all of the initiatives that we are doing to implement for the next school year.
Thank you, Dr. Ross, and thank you for all your work this summer, getting us ready for everything, etc. And Jody should have also sent out to everyone starter school information at the open houses, just so that everyone has that as well.
Back to you for reports.
Now until reports, I'll give you two. The first being our legislative review on report from Mr. Amstutz.
Okay, I don't have much. As you may be aware, Mr. Landers and myself, Mr. Lizerick, and Mr. Saxton, a whole group of others, met with Joe Chaboni on Friday and Friday. And we discussed a new plan that the state has where we can apply for, I guess it's a grant, but it would give us up to 16% towards facilities. We talked to Mr. Chaboni about hopefully being able to pass some type of legislation that could increase that amount for us based on potentially our poverty level instead of our, the normal funding because of our high poverty values. And so I believe he's going to draft something to that effect, put it in the system and see what kind of legs it can get. Is that about it, Frank, or do you want?
In the meantime, I was directed by the President and Vice President to go ahead and apply for the facilities grant.
Well, that's what Joe recommended, that we at least apply for that grant because the 60% as mentioned, stone, it could be higher.
Is it in addition to what we would normally get from the state?
No.
No, it's the Ohio School Facilities.
That's just it, it's a grant.
Right.
So we were getting 12% before, now we're getting 16, something like that.
So we wanted to have a discussion with Senator Chaboni to just kind of, you know, share with him our thoughts on that and how no other district, other hundred districts near us have been able to successfully build buildings with a better match and our match is rather insubstantial to truly try and take that to our community with a good shot of success.
Mark and I had the opportunity to speak with a couple residents recently who I was surprised at that they, there were two themes in their conversations. And one was, what's with our buildings? Everybody's getting nicer buildings. And it's hard to explain because they don't feel like we're a rich community, to all the sense we are, so.
When we have over 50% green reduced ownership at Market Street in Robinwood, we're not a rich community.
So you say the percentage goes from 12% to 60%?
16. If we're at 60, it would be, I mean, I think South Range got 52% when they built. I know Youngstown got 90%. Austin Town's on the 54%. And their building right now, I get like $23 million. I think I wrote in the paper for that. Love to have that for this place.
As part of this, Mrs. Palmer, you'll be happy to know that we're looking at a way to close the building. If we can replace the building, maybe we can make it large enough to close the building in the process, so.
It was just a gee whiz, it wasn't a.
No.
It was a building. It was something I think we should look at.
And this is the opportunity, if we could somehow swing the funds from the state to help us build a building large enough to enable us to have the capacity to move up some elementary kids to an intermediate building, that would free up the space to perhaps close down the elementary. So that's.
Well, part of that of all the discussion has to be, what if I build a middle school and how do I turn it into an elementary school or something else if I need to in 10 years? So I think that whole concept of redoing buildings and how you build classrooms now is much different than was even five or 10 years ago.
No, I really don't have anything else.
Next report is from Mr. Credillo in regards to the high school graduation rate, which is a topic we had talked about in our July Board Workshop that we had asked him to provide some additional information on.
Sorry. Deliberated this.
I can see it.
You can find my glasses.
As Mr. Landers stated in our last meeting, we talked about the idea, or the part of the report card, that's the graduation rate. And I believe graduation rate, the grade, the letter grade we would receive would be a B, but that's very disingenuous and misleading. If you look at the breakdown we have provided here for you, it really shows you the reality of the situation. It's not necessarily as low as you would think it is. In the first category, these are students who have passed all requirements to graduate, whether it was making up an OGT or taking a class over the summer. Those students are going to graduate. The second column is really the column of focus, that's what we had talked about. Those are the option 23 students. Those are special ed students who have completed everything that we've asked them to complete at Foreman High School. It's everything that the State of Ohio has asked them to complete, including their proficiency tests. But these students have an option, option 23. And at that time, they can opt out of receiving their diploma and attend a trade school, for example, for training, which we support 100%. This is probably the best thing for some of these students to learn a, to learn a trade. The problem is, these kids count against our graduation rate. So this is just an example of 2013, how many kids will count against our graduation rate? If you move to the next column, these are students who actually dropped out, are missing, can't find them. They did not graduate. They did not fulfill what we asked them to do or what the state did. So those are, that's a true number. Those are students who really did not graduate. The following column are a couple of students who did not graduate, but there is somewhat of a plan in place to get them to graduate. As you know, it's a little difficult, once they walk out the door and they're 18, it becomes a little more complex, a little more difficult. But really, the focus is the second column. The other thing to keep in note, and these are 2013 statistics, these will not show up, correct me if it's wrong, these will not show up until the next year's report card, graduation rate is a year behind. So this, but this is just some concrete evidence to show you how it's affecting our school. When somebody looks at Foreman's report card, it's going to say in the future they received a letter B, when in reality, our percentage of graduation is probably at the A level.
And Mr. Credillo made a point when you were reading with Senator Chaboni on Friday to bring this up because it kind of points out an inconsistency, I believe, between how Ohio interprets it and how.
And he felt it was a common sense thing. We threw a couple things at him, this was something that I sort of, the pork barrel we did, I throw something on at the end, I pork barreled at the end, but half-hand worked. Is that the right term?
I don't think so.
What's the term you add on a bill at the last?
You're the full place to.
Christmas tree, you add things on to a bill.
Or a Christmas tree, whatever it is. I threw it on at the end. But he was receptive to it. He did realize that it's not, it's not common sense that they would count that against us. So we actually had a situation today where a student, I guess accidentally or misunderstood, took their diploma, and now they're trying to get it back, or trying to give it back so they can get this, and we're informed that that's, that's not a possibility.
One of the cases. Once they are handed their diploma, they cannot give it back to you.
Right. What we do in graduation is they have the actual outer cover, if there's no diploma in there, we allow them to walk to graduation with the idea that they're not actually receiving the diploma. Once they receive the diploma, then, you know, it's over. As you can tell, it's very misleading to say these kids didn't graduate, it's not, not really fair.
Jared, if we had removed those 11 from our count that have not graduated, would we be an A?
I don't know because we're a year behind.
Yeah.
I'd have, we would have to go back to last year's students who didn't. I don't know, Dr. Ross, maybe you would know her 10? I, I think the safe bet would be yes. I mean, we're in the 90%, we're in the 90 percentile already with graduation.
We come out and do this statistically, five kids have not graduated in class of 365, 370, in the high 90%.
So the six that graduated in the summer, we get credit for.
Right.
Yeah, for next year's report card. We have, I believe, up until the first day of school this year to include everybody for the 2013 year. So those students in the first column will be included in the report card for next year. Good timing, the Senator Chaboni was here and, you know, the roast plate, pork barrel,[1733.61]